Okay, it is six o'clock. I'll call this August the 18th, 2015 meeting of Andalusia City Council to order. And I'll ask you to stand and join with Councilmember Griffin as she leads us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father, we come before you with our hearts filled with praise and thanksgiving. We thank you for the freedom to meet here tonight. We ask you to continue to give us wisdom and knowledge as we lead. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to serve our city honestly and to the best of our ability. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, pledge, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our guest. I knew if we kept inviting people to come join us, we'd get some folks to come join us. And we are happy to have folks with us tonight. Remind everyone that we meet on the first and third Tuesday of each month with the work session starting at five o'clock upstairs in the workshop and then the regular session then coming here in the auditorium at six o'clock. The first item of business is to consider the approval of our minutes for our last meeting, which was held on August the 4th.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we accept the minutes as written for that regular meeting, August 4th.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes of August the 4th. Do we have a second?
A second, thank you.
Now we have a second. Do we have any discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by raising your right hand. And I believe that is unanimous, and I thank you for it. No unfinished business. Under new business, I want to start off with a couple of proclamations, or at least one proclamation, and then a presentation to our chief of police, and then we're going to recognize a couple of our police officers as well. So I'm going to excuse myself from up here and go down to the podium to do that. And when we finish that, I'll come back and we'll commence our regular remainder of the agenda. I'm going to ask my friend Ward Taylor if he will come up here and join me. This is the month of August is the 100th year of Andalusia Motor Company being in business in the city of Andalusia. And that's quite an accomplishment. So I'm going to read this proclamation and then present it to Ward. Proclamation of congratulations. Whereas during the month of August 2015, Andalusia Motor Company is celebrating 100 years of business in the city of Andalusia, Alabama. And whereas Andalusia Motor Company was founded on August the 15th, 1915, by J.R. Ward and focused on selling new Ford vehicles. And whereas members of the Ward and Taylor families have owned and operated the business since J.R. Ward's death in 1938, including Howard C. Ward, Luther Taylor Jr., and Ward S. Taylor. And whereas while many things have changed in the past 10 decades, the Andalusia Motor Company family have remained determined to provide quality products and service to the growing community that is Andalusia. And whereas the Andalusia Motor Company is a staple in the city of Andalusia, and Mr. Taylor credits his company's century-long success to the high-quality service it has provided to Andalusia and the surrounding area throughout those many years. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Earl V. Johnson, Mayor of the city of Andalusia, on behalf of the entire city council and all the citizens of Andalusia, that I do hereby find it an honor and distinct privilege to present this proclamation of congratulations and best wishes to Ward S. Taylor on the 100th anniversary of Andalusia Motor Company. Sign my name, this date.
Congratulations.
It's a good place to do business.
Do you want to make a speech?
No, I just... Thank you. Thank you, council. We appreciate it. It's been a privilege to serve the community this long. Look forward to doing it some more.
We're going to get to sleep. This time I'm going to call Chief Paul Hudson down center, please. Front and center. I want to present to Chief Paul Hudson, the Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police and the University Partnership of Alabama hereby awards Chief Paul Hudson Certificate of Achievement in Police Management for 160 hours of accredited work dated the sixth day of August 2015. Congratulations, Chief. Now, Chief is going to introduce two of our latest certified police officers and ask them to come down front for congratulations. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to introduce two of our new police officers. They just graduated the police academy last Thursday, August the 13th. Back in May, they started the journey for 13 weeks and spent 13 weeks in Selma at the police academy. And we finally got them back to work so they can actually go out here and work for us now. The first officer I want to introduce, the Officer Tyler Patterson. He's a graduate from Red Level High School. We lured him away from Shaw Industries, Mr. Powell down there, to come to work for us at the city. Tyler was a squad leader at the police academy. That was one of the accomplishments he made there. We're glad to have him on board and look forward to having him for many years to come. Second officer is Officer Brian Ricks. Brian come to us almost two years ago now. He wanted to be a dispatcher for us, so he started out dispatching. And he decided he wanted to go into law enforcement work. Instead of sitting behind the desk, he wanted to get out there and work in the car. So we gave him the opportunity. He started in the patrol division back at the end of last December. He graduated the academy also last week with Tyler on August the 13th. So that's our two newest officers, two newest certified officers. And we're glad to have them both and look forward to working with them. And if y'all have any problems, y'all just let them know and they'll be glad to handle them for you.
That is a fun part of the job, recognizing our citizens who've accomplished something extraordinary in the business field and then our police officers who are out there every day and every night looking after our well-being. So congratulations to all of those. Six, item 6B is we need to nominate someone to the Covenant County Board of Equalization. And so we want to make one appointment or one nomination of that, and then there are other nominations to be made later to serve on that board. And I think the name that we have to nominate is Virginia Bronner. So if we could have a second, motion and a second to that effect, we'll vote on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we nominate Virginia Bronner to be reappointed to the County Board of Equalization.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, that's a good point Mr. Powell made. Ms. Bronner has served on this board before, so she'll be going back to work that she knows something about. All right, all those in favor of the nomination of Virginia Bronner, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that carries, and I thank you for that. Resolution number 2015-44 is to authorize and approve the formation of a Public Education Building Authority. This is kind of a long story, and I'll try to cut it down to as short as I can and still make some sense out of it. Under Alabama law, there is provision to create a Public Education Building Authority in a municipality or in a school district. That authority can then do work on school property. There's some legal things that had to take place, but quite frankly, it involves the authority doing the building, construction work, being empowered to do that on that property. There's a group of people in Andalusia who've been working to help improve sports facilities on our school grounds, as well as other facilities for our schools. And this group of people want to form one of these authorities so that they can move forward to make some very impressive improvements to our facilities for our youngsters here in Andalusia. That includes some work at the various stadiums, football, baseball, softball stadium, perhaps some tennis courts, additional tennis courts, and also some work on our auditorium at the high school where the band and choruses and all perform. So that building, I think, the auditorium opened in 1964, and the football stadium opened in 1950. So they're kind of getting like us, they're getting a little age on them. They've had a little bit of work here and there, but they need a big makeover. The only authority, the only work that the council has to do here is just to approve the forming of the authority and the creation of the authority. We don't have any responsibility for it after that, except naming three directors. After the authority is formed, the authority will come back to you and ask you to name three directors. Those directors have to be residents of Andalusia. They will serve six-year, two-year cycled terms. The city of Andalusia will not have any responsibility or any liability for any work that's done by this authority, will not be responsible for funding it or anything like that. This is just, again, is a creature of statute, a creature of law, that will enable to get the best bang for the buck, so to speak, on this work. So I recommend it to you. I think that this is something that, there's a lot more to be said about this than I've just said, and you'll be hearing about that in the future. But I recommend that we move forward and give these folks the consent of the city to move forward and form this Andalusia Public Education Building Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we authorize and approve the formation of the Public Education Building Authority of the city of Andalusia.
Okay, do we have a second to that resolution?
I second the motion.
Have a second to adopt the resolution authorizing the creation of the Public Education Building Authority. Any further discussion from the council? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that carries, and I thank you for that. We have a... Next item of business is 6D, and I'm going, I read this memorandum upstairs in the workshop, and I think it says it better than I can say it off the top of my head. So I'm going to read the memorandum again, even though I've read it once upstairs, I'll read it for folks who have not heard it yet. For several years, we've been looking for a way to improve our ability to promote Andalusia business and commerce and to promote Andalusia in city and school activities and events. We employ social media, our website, our local newspaper, our radio and television stations, our public announcements. But still, we hear from our citizens that they don't know about these events, or often we hear that. Since the advent of electronic billboards during the last five years, I have expressed a keen desire to procure one for use by the city as a means to enhance our image and share information with our citizens. We researched the idea and contacted vendors, but due to cost, have never been able to craft a practical project. Recently, we learned that the Andalusia Chamber of Commerce and some Andalusia businessmen, namely Whitney Jones and Robert Bishop, were interested in creating a partnership with the city to install two electronic signs or billboards in order to make the project viable. After several meetings with the other parties and much research, our city attorney, Mark Christensen, has drafted an agreement that outlines in detail how we propose to install two signs. It is contemplated that there will be two signs on separate locations. One on city property on the Martin Luther King Jr. Expressway at Sixth Avenue, that'll be known as sign number one. The other on the west side of U.S. Highway 84 and Alabama 55 at the top of Deveraux Hill, that'll be known as sign project number two. There will be two partners, one for each sign or sign project. Sign project number one partners will be the Chamber, the city, and Mr. Whitney Jones. Sign project number two will be the same with the exception of an additional partner, Mr. Robert Bishop, or the BBS Group. A conservative estimate for the purchase and installation of an 11-foot by 22-foot sign, the pole and all the necessary stuff that goes with it, is $1,000, excuse me, is $100,000 each. The city's initial share for sign number one is approximately $33,000, and $25,000 for sign number two, or basically $58,000 for two signs, where if we did it by ourselves, it'd be $100,000 for one sign and $200,000 for two signs. So you can see that we're getting quite a bit of bang for our buck here. The partners will equally share in the operating expenses and revenues derived from the sale of space on the signs. The city's share of operating expenses is to be about $6,600 annually for both signs, that's the total for both signs. Each party will pay for space used by a particular party, which we expect to be $500 per rotation per month. In other words, if the city wants to use one of the rotations to advertise a city event, we would be entitled to do that, but it'll be $500 per month. That will go into the partnership coffers. Each sign will have the potential for nine rotations or spaces, and those not used by the partners will be sold. So for example, if we use on sign number one, if we use one sign, one rotation for the city and one rotation for each of our two partners, that would be three rotations would mean, that would be six rotations that we could sell for $500 a month each. The city's participation in this project, excuse me, let me go back, I left something out. We expect excess spaces to be sold quickly, and the revenue will be divided among the owners on a regular basis. The Chamber of Commerce has tentatively agreed to be the administrator and bookkeeper of the business of the signs in consideration of our granting uneasement for sign one on Sixth Avenue on our property. The city's participation in this project will require use of Amendment 725 of the Alabama Constitution, which allows us to participate in certain business activities. Therefore, we will have to publish this proposal, publish it properly, give proper notice. But now I ask you to formally approve that we do that, that we do advertise it, and then after that, we'll have an open public meeting at a later date that will be announced in the notice that's published. And then at that time, we will vote on whether to actually enter into the contract. So I would ask you tonight, council, if you would, to authorize us to go ahead and do the advertising so that we can then have the official public meeting on that and take a vote on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve the advertising of this proposed partnership between the city and the other entities.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any further discussion from the council? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. And I thank you for that. Okay, item 6E is Resolution 2015-46, an Alabama Department of Transportation project. This has to do with the American for Disabilities Act, the ADA, which is a federal agency, is really letting the hammer down, so to speak, on municipalities and on the states and on the counties to bring up public transportation, public sidewalks, public areas to meet strict ADA requirements. The state of Alabama is, of course, got sidewalks all over the state that they're responsible for, including some here in Andalusia. They're not going to try to fix all of these sidewalks at one time. They're going to do some every year until they can get through this process. Try to do them all at one time would be extremely expensive. But they have put us on notice that they want to act, to move forward on making some improvements on some sidewalks here in Andalusia. Those are basically, I think, lay up and down East 3 North Street. Is that right? Basically up East 3 North Street? Highway 55, Stanley Avenue, okay? And they have asked us to give them permission to do that, and then we'll have certain responsibilities for maintenance issues off their right-of-way in the future to maintain these. So I recommend to you again, the cost of this work would be borne by the state of Alabama, not by the city.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2015-46, Alabama Department of Transportation project.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Mount. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you for that. We have presented upstairs an amendment to one of our ordinances. This would be Amendment 2015, or excuse me, it would be ordinance 2015-2002, which amends ordinance number 1996, 2008, having to do with the capital improvement account. This is an account that money is in for the city for capital improvements around the city. The problem is, in the old ordinance, the language was somewhat straitened and difficult. We ask our city attorney to reword the ordinance and so that we could amend that so that it would be a little clearer what went into that count and what money would go into it and what money could be taken out and used for. And he has done that. So we have the ordinance 2015-02 here that will amend the ordinance as I described. But when we adopt the ordinance, we have to carry it over for two meetings, two separate meetings, unless we suspend the rules. We choose not to suspend the rules on this, so we'll take this ordinance up in our next meeting, and it will be advertised in the paper as well. You have to advertise all ordinances before you vote on them. So we'll take that up, and we'll consider what I've just said, the first reading of this ordinance. Item 6G is a resolution approving a bid on a letting that we had for some turf equipment. The low bidder on this project for this equipment out at our municipal golf course, even though we use that equipment in other places, but it's primarily used at the golf course, was Beard Equipment Company. We had two other bidders. One was Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation, and one was Jacobson. But Beard Equipment was the low bidder. That's the same company that's had this contract for many years, so we'll be staying with the same company. I think they primarily use John Deere equipment. So we'll be getting the same equipment that we're accustomed to, and they were the low bidder on this letting. So I would recommend to you that you approve the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2015-45. This is approving a bid for golf course and turf maintenance equipment through Beard Equipment Company.
All right, have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed, same thing. Thank you for that. Next item is Resolution 6H, which is a Resolution 2015-40, which is assessing some abatement cost on some abatement projects. One of those was the taking down of a house, removal of a house, the tree had fallen through and had fallen into very bad disrepair. And one was, the other two were just cleanup of weeds and grasses. And I recommend to you that you approve the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for 2015-40, assess an abatement cost.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Griffin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell. Any further discussion from the council, questions? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you for that. We have, next item of business is 6I, Resolution 2015-41, which is actually asking for an abatement on three properties. One on Pugh Street, one on Barton Street, one on Third Street. These are weeds and grasses. You have photographs of these properties there in your packet, and they all appear to me to need action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2015-41, abating the three pieces of property as listed.
All right, do we have a second?
I second.
Are any further questions or discussions from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you for that. Next item is 6J, which is Resolution 2015-42. It's listed there as Dangerous Buildings and Unsafe Structures Program. Let me address the background of this just a little bit so it'd be clear what we're talking about here. The city of Andalusia has had ordinance dealing with abatement of properties for many, many That ordinance has been amended from time to time. I think the most recent amendment to it was when Mr. Mayor Armstrong was in office in 1994, and has not been amended since that time, to my knowledge, with one exception. About three years ago, the Alabama Legislature enacted a law that made it much, much easier for municipalities to act on abatement of weeds and grasses than on buildings. The reason for that is quite obvious. Weeds and grasses grow much faster and have to be dealt with in a more timely manner before they become dangerous to the public. So in the growing season, like this time of the year, in the spring and summer and early fall, it's pretty unusual for us to have a council meeting that we don't have to act on some request from our abatement officer for some weed or grass abatements. I'll also say that many, many times, these abatement requests come from the neighborhoods where these properties are located. It's not us out just out looking for properties. It's neighbors calling up and saying, "Two doors down, the grass is waist-high, and it's been that way for a month, and I can't get anything done about it. What y'all going to do?" So we go out and look at it, and if it meets the requirements of the law, the abatement officer will bring it back and recommend that the property be abated. What we'd usually do, not what we usually do, what we always do first is we always try to contact the property owner first and work and request that they clean their properties up. Sometimes you can't find the property owners, they live out of town, or you can't get a line on where they are, and you try to call them and get in touch with them. It's impossible. So then, in those cases, they have to be brought to the council for action. And that's usually the ones we have to deal with on a regular basis. But what this ordinance, no, excuse me, what this resolution has to do with is a much more difficult issue, and that is the abatement of dangerous buildings and unsafe structures. About two weeks ago, we had an attorney from Birmingham who came down to put on basically a seminar for the council and for our staff and other people who might have been interested from Han Arundel, is a law firm headquartered in Mobile and Birmingham and Montgomery, and I think they got an office in Huntsville. But this gentleman specializes in this narrow area of the law, primarily abatement issues, difficult abatement issues on dangerous buildings, unsafe structures. He has gone into municipalities all around the state and helped them to tweak their ordinances a little bit so that it better gives more clearer direction to the city on how to move gives more clearer, uh, direction to the city on how to move forward to get this work done. Uh, he's also written, uh, a, a, a number of treatises on this. He's also represented municipalities all around the state and has made recommendations to, how to move forward on difficult, uh, areas in their cities, and he's been successful everywhere he's been. Uh, what I'm asking for tonight is permission from the city council for us to engage, uh, this firm to help us come to Andalusia, look at what we've got, work with our city attorney, uh, and, and be as, as active with the city attorney as the city attorney needs him to be. He won't have to be here to do everything, but just, uh, in areas where we may have some questions, uh, this firm will help us work on our ordinance, will try to get that amended in place as quickly as we can, and then we're going to move forward on some of these structures in our city that we all would probably recognize, and we had pictures of them up here on the wall. Uh, so that's what I'm asking from the council tonight, is the authority for me to move forward to engage this, this attorney and his firm to help us get that done.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we're, pardon me, that we approve Resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-two, retaining the firm of Han Arindall LLC to work with us on developing our ordinances, so that we can deal with dangerous buildings and unsafe structures.
All right, have a motion, we have, have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, now, yesterday, I had a call from Mr. John Sheriff and asked if he could come speak to this issue, and I certainly, I said absolutely if you choose to, if you want to do that. Uh, John, if you're, you're welcome, if you want to speak to this matter of this resolution or something related to it, you have five minutes to...
Great.
Yes, sir?
You're honored.
You're honored, okay.
Mayor Johnson, honorable council members, I'm here today to speak on Resolution number two thousand fifteen dash forty-two, titled Dangerous and Unsafe Structure Program. Character can be defined as the combination of traits and qualities distinguishing the individual. I would argue to you that character of a municipality or the character of a city can also be defined by its downtown area and its historical buildings. It's crucial to our perception as a town and a community, uh, as what we were, who we are, and who we will be, to protect these structures. Now, the people have obviously spoken in town, there's been a lot of gossip and a lot of love up to work, quite frankly, on social media. Um, this is something I think we can all agree needs to be done. July twenty-second, the Andalusia Star News printed an article quoting the Honorable Councilman Kenneth Mount. I believe he said, "We have to get something done." He knit, hit the nail on the head. Uh, this is on the agenda tonight, and I would ask that we don't waste any time and move forward on this and keep the public aware of what's going on. Um, I know we're not a home rule state, I know this is a little bit more difficult to process, I know we have to abide by statute and due process. I'm aware that this will take time, but now we have got to do something. These structures will not repair themselves, they will not fix themselves, and they do reflect, uh, quite frankly, on, on our reputation as a community. We want a game plan, we want a timetable, and we want reassurance that action will be taken, quite frankly, before it's too late. And I, I understand that the city has done a lot in the past, I'm not being hypocritical. Mayor, you and I've had conversations about this. Springdale, big B, very hypocritical meter to fuss the city with all y'all have done, uh, the ballet studio and, quite frankly, City Hall where I went to school. But there are other parts of town I'm concerned about, and, uh, it, it, it ain't gonna get better by itself. So, uh, what I would say in summation is please just keep us advised and, uh, make the community feel like they're being heard.
Thank you, John. Uh, just as a quick reply, uh, we all agree with what you've just said, that's why we're taking action tonight, and we can assure you that we are going to move forward as expeditiously as we can, and can, but we, we do have to abide by the law. Uh, I, I will say one thing further. Uh, we have tried as a city, uh, and particularly, uh, when we're dealing with issues where we have to ask people to do something, to deal with, not to deal with a heavy hand. In other words, we try to work with people and bring them along in a way that's not, appears like we're out there in jackboots kicking in doors. Uh, and so, uh, and when you do that, sometimes you get disappointed, and you don't get things done as quickly and as expeditiously as you would like to do. But I think it, I think it behooves all of us that we're, we're all, we're all neighbors here in Andalusia, we're all citizens, and would want to try to treat each other that way and not be heavy-handed, and, uh, but I will say this, we are going to, uh, this is, this is step number one, step number two will be close behind, and three, four, and five will be, you, you'll be able to see them, and we will, we will adopt some sort of, of a game plan, uh, and you will know what it is. And I think you will be pleased. Now, all these problems can't be solved overnight or even, even in a, a month or two, but we are going to move forward with it, because we agree with what you said, it's time that we do it. So thank y'all, thank you for your interest in our community, thank you for coming tonight and speaking, and, uh, we too are interested in our community, I assure you. Uh, we did this building, we did Church Street, uh, we developed Springdale into a, a beautiful park, uh, we did the old, uh, Alatech's building now being used by our chamber, which is now Showplace. Uh, so we've, and, and we have removed a lot of buildings around town. You, you may not know about them, but they, they're, they're gone, and basically, the reason you don't know about them is because the, the, the owners of those properties worked with us, and we didn't have to come down with a heavy hand of, of the law on them. So, uh, but occasionally, you have to do that, and that's what we plan to do. Okay, anything else from the council, members of the council? Or it's time to take a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous, as you can see, everyone wants to do this and move on with it. Okay, uh, Resolution, uh, six K is Resolution two thousand fifteen dash forty-three, declaring, uh, a couple of, uh, police vehicles surplus. Uh, the law requires us, if we own a piece of property that's, that's considered capital property, like a vehicle, before we can sell it, we have to declare it surplus. And these two vehicles are vehicles that have been in the police department, one since two thousand and five, and maybe the other was four, I wasn't sure, chief, six. Okay, five and six, we got the wrong number on one of them. They were both Crown Victorias, a Ford Crown Vic's, one has a hundred twenty-seven thousand miles on it, and one has a hundred five thousand miles on it, but they are no longer, uh, quite frankly, safe to be used for, for police vehicles. So it's my recommendation to you, council, that you approve the resolution, so we can declare them, declaring them surplus, and then we can sell them at auction or in some other fashion, take that money and apply it back, uh, for use in the future for vehicles and other equipment for the police department.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to two thousand fifteen dash forty-three for surplus vehicles from the police department.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Griffin, do we have a second?
I second.
Have a second by Mr. Scanyers, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, so those vehicles are officially declared surplus. We have no other business that requires action by the council. Would like to make a couple of announcements. Uh, there are two openings on the Planning Commission, uh, if you have an interest in serving on the Planning Commission for the City of Andalusia, uh, call City Hall, let us know. Uh, and there are two openings on the Historical Preservation Authority. Anyone has an interest in serving on that, please let us know. Uh, or if you want to know what either one of those folks do, let us know, we'll tell you. Okay, uh, I know there's some folks who, who came to talk about some issues tonight, having to do with, with, with some of the abatement issues. I'll be happy to stay around and answer any questions and talk with you after the meeting, uh, if you, if you choose and want to do that. Okay, hearing nothing else, we will stand adjourned.